Special Board of Education meeting to order. We have two items on our agenda tonight. So it should be a relatively short public session. It is Monday, June 15. We are meeting via Zoom according to the Governor's Executive Order 2020-04, Section 8, and Emergency Order 12, Section 3. Everybody is practicing social distancing and we are all separate from each other. Okay, Mr. Guarino, could you please call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Guarino is here. Ms. Johnson? You're on mute, Ms. Johnson?
Well, she's here.
She's here.
President, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, much better. Okay.
Ms. Zim?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Jilio?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Raymond?
I muted myself. I'm here.
Ms. Odin?
Here.
Ms. Timmons? Okay, we also have Dr. Mosley. We have, um, we have Mr. Donovan.
Here.
And we have Ms. Kinsella.
Yeah.
And is Mr. Cadenon, I'm gonna mess up the name, but is Bruce, is he with the ETV or is he here for the meeting?
He's with the, he's the Director of the IT Department for the city. I assume he's here.
Oh, okay.
Observe.
Okay.
Unless he has good news about having, you know, more money for us.
Okay. Miss, I'm not gonna, I can't pronounce his last name. I'm sorry. Coda, Cadenon?
Caganin. I think it's Caganin. Bruce Caganin?
Cadenon?
Yeah.
Okay.
My high school French.
Okay, so we have a quorum. And I understand, Mr. Donovan and Dr. Mosley, that you have some pretty good news for us as we close out our fiscal year.
Well, guys, we'll talk. I'll just turn it over to Dan.
All right, yes. The good immediate news is that the forecast shows we'll have about 820,000 in surplus this year. The bad news about that is we have to spend it by, let's say, June 25th. But that shouldn't be a problem if we choose the right items. And just so that you're not making this decision in a vacuum, next school year, we have the one-time state equity funds, which at this point in time, and we don't, the, the Board of Alderman has not officially approved the budget, but at this point in time, that's 2.2 million. Those funds would be spent between July 1st of this year and June 30th of 2021. And we've received our CARES Act money, which is the money given from the federal government to the state, to the schools, and that'll be 3,274,000. That money can be backdated to March of this year, and we can spend that through September of '21. So there's a little more time for that. That will be treated like a grant. So we have to sort of put in, we have to apply for specific items, get them approved, and receive payment for those. So we'll have a significant amount of money to make decisions on, on what to, what to spend some of this money on. So some of the suggestions, I think tonight, what we really just need to do is decide what to do with that 820,000. So I put together a sheet and basically gave some suggestions. And I'll just run through those quickly, and then you can ask all the questions. There's a number of books and materials that Bob Chopra, the ALL Director, had, would love to have, and the total of that is $50,000. We've talked a lot about furniture at the high schools, North and South. I did receive from Nate Burns at North, a quote which totals 133,300. And what that'll purchase is 1,400 student chairs. And I think they only have, what about 1,800 students? 150 cafeteria chairs and 200 computer chairs. So that gives you an idea. South bought a few more chairs this year. I did not get back an exact quote from them yet, but, so I sort of put a place, place card in here right now for 100,000. Now, those two items were part of the initial 2.9 million, that is now maybe only 2.2 million. So those are the two of the items that would have been in that 2.9. So we could sort of slide over and use those now if we wanted to. The next item on the screen is, I think, a really good idea. It's Smart Start Pay Downs. Basically, what we have done over the last five years or so is every, every year, maybe a school or two, we work with the utility companies using this Smart Start program. Basically, they pay for the LED lights. We then start saving money once they're installed. We use that savings to pay back the utility for the cost of the lights that they paid for on our behalf. Then, when we finished paying, um, we then would start getting the savings. So if we want to pay some of those off quickly, then that will open up money for us next year that we could use for, let's say, the out-of-district or for something else. So, um, that's, that's what that is. Then there's the transfer to, we have a reserve for special ed costs. Our out-of-district cost was a million more than we budgeted this year, or probably will be. So one of the ideas was to take some of this 800 and put it into a, into that reserve. Now, to do that, there's a few mechanics we have to do. So in a sense, if you, if you did a Smart Start pay down, in effect, you could be doing the same thing, because you're paying down some costs this year, that'll open up the money next year, so. And then the last two items were also two of the smaller items that we had on, in our original budget of the 2.9 million. The QuickBooks software that we're using for student activity accounts and in the accounting group is about 18 years old. It's really had its day, time to update versions. And then the scanning the documents. Tara and Gabby have been cleaning out and going through a lot of the books that we have. We're required to keep by law minutes of meetings and certain other documents. Some of those documents are so old, they're starting to fall apart. So what we would do, would, we would be basically scan these documents into a scannable file and then not need to keep those books, which over time will fall apart. And that was, we received a quote for 12,000. So that's the, that's the total, that's 1.486, 1,486. We only have 820 to disperse, but those were just some ideas. Obviously, if anyone has any other ideas, they'd be welcome also.
Thank you very much, Mr. Donovan. Dr. Mosley, did you wish to speak next, or should I go ahead and start calling on board members?
I think that it's, I think what Dan shared was perfect, and I, we can, $800,000, but we've already spent more of it. So I think it's just, it's, you know, we always have a way to spend it, so I'm also, thank you for asking, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. So I had asked everyone to use the chat function if you have a question or comment, so that I can see that, since I can't see everyone's faces when we're sharing a document. I mean, I think it's important to have this on the screen while we're talking. So Ms. Johnson has let us know that she has a question or comment. And Ms. Johnson, I just want to say, I enjoy your Kramer in the background, but where's the cat tonight?
She's right over there. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I can.
Okay, I changed headsets. She's right over there on the cat perch. I have a different, see?
Ah, there she is. Now my night feels more complete. Thank you.
I just changed computers for tonight. Okay, I sent something out to you, Ms. Raymond, and you, Mr. Donovan, the notes from the Board of Alderman meeting. It didn't copy and paste the way I wanted to, but I want to get back to that 2.9 million dollars that I guess the Board of Alderman took, what, 700,000, I think it was, from us? Mr. Donovan?
That's correct. They haven't officially voted on that yet, but that's what has been proposed, correct?
Okay. As I'm reading the minutes, you know, here it is, everybody. I'm concerned, because this is money from the state. This is an educational fund? Is that what the money came from originally? State Educational Fund, a grant?
Well, it's not a grant. It's monies from the state as a way to try to bring more equity to school districts within the state.
No, I think it's called the adequacy fund.
That's right, the adequacy fund. I forgot, it's been so many years. And I remember we used to get a windfall on that. Okay, here's my problem. It's that I know they've done this in the past, and I guess, and this is why I said I'd want a legal opinion outside Corporation Council and the city, because if this is an adequacy grant and is proposed for the school district, why does the Alderman have the right to take this money? I can understand if it went into the general fund, and then they were taking it and then releasing it to us. It should be an aligned item, appropriated, allocated for the school district rather than touching it to pay down the tax rate. The tax rate has to come down. They need to find it within the budget to maybe eliminate some items. Maybe the Performing Arts Center and everything that goes with that would be a great idea to start than to take it from the school district. So I have a lot of concerns if this money is appropriated from the adequacy grant, then this is where it should be going with the school district. So I am saying that we need to get some type of an opinion, because if not, this is, I don't care if it's been done in the past, that doesn't mean it was right to be done in the past. So if anybody wants to read some of this, um, it's, it's in the last budget meeting of 62, page 11 through 15. And I'm not happy with this. I'm not happy with this at all. This is money that we could use to get caught up with some of the things we need. I think there's a lot of, you know, I'm looking at where we can spend the money. I think the QuickBooks software, I think it's about time we update that. I mean, that's bad, we're really out of date. Scan documents, we should have as many of the past meetings, minutes online, like the Board of Alderman does, so people can go back. So I don't see too much wrong with what you're asking for the 1.4 million dollars, but I do have a problem with the Alderman taking 700,000 dollars that should have been appropriated to us. So I hope everybody on the board understands this, you know? You can only rob so many times. And this is where we need to find out if that money is legally our money, and if it is, fork it over, figure out where you're gonna get 700,000 more to, to lower the tax rate, which they have to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I let my alderpeople know how I felt about this when, when it happened, but I'm also concerned that if, that the, that the next option would be to take 700,000 out of our operating budget, and taking it out of a one-time fund versus our ongoing operating budget feels safer, but I would very much like them to reconsider. Ms. Johnson? I'm sorry, Ms. Brown?
Thank you, Heather. Thank you, Paula, and thank you, Dan, for putting these numbers together. And Paula, I agree with you. I think this money, 700,000 or a million dollars in a school district makes a huge difference, whereas coming off the, bringing the tax rate down, it's gonna be just a little drop in the bucket. We can do some really good things with that money, and I'm right there with you. So I'd really be interested to know where the legality of that comes in. I actually have another alternative to how we can spend the one-time funds that I think might be relevant now, and unfortunately, it's not on Mr. Donovan's list, and, you know, like I said, there's always something else to spend money on. A few weeks ago, I had Mr. Donovan put together some numbers for what it would cost to get a one-to-one Chromebook plan for the kids in the district. I think both coming off remote learning, the potential for an emergency situation for going into remote learning in the future, I, the modified remote learning classroom potential, and some of the different models that the superintendent has proposed, I think it could be really relevant to try to get Chromebooks in the hands of all kids. We did a halfway decent job getting them in the kids that need, were, you know, below the poverty line or had, um, the, don't, are on the free and reduced lunch program. But I think there's a lot of students in the middle-class range who, they were sharing equipment with multiple students in the same house, because we didn't have 7,000 Chromebooks to distribute through the whole district. So some of the numbers came back that we could get enough Chromebooks for the district at 726,000 if we were to purchase, 690,000 if we were to use some money from the CARE Act, or possibly a, um, a lease plan. Before we commit to spending all this money, and it would be best to do it as a one-time purchase rather than roll it into our entire new budget, because it is a lot of money. And again, 700,000 is almost the exact amount of money that the Alderman took away out of those one-time equity funds. So I would propose that maybe something like that is on the table when we're looking at how to spend these funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown, and thank you, Mr. Donovan, for doing that work. Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, in, in response to that, I certainly don't disagree with what Ms. Brown said, but I think we can, um, if we want to go one-to-one, we can use either the one-time state equity funds or potentially even CARES Act money for that. So I think that may be a very good option, but I think in the long run, the best, if we're gonna continue to do this, what we don't want to do is, let's say, if, spend 700,000 this year to buy a lot of Chromebooks, because then six years from now, we're gonna have to have another 700,000 to buy that many more Chromebooks. I think it, I think the leasing option probably makes better sense, because you can, we can take some of these one-time funds, either from the, the 2.2 million or the 3.2 million, and put it down, payment down, and then spread it much more evenly within the operating budget, which we'll be able to manage when we don't have one-time funds, which my guess is after next year, we won't have any one-time funds. So though I do agree with assuming we want to go one-to-one, that that's a very good idea, I think we should use those other two funding mechanisms to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Just to follow up on that, Dr. Mosley, is the task force looking into the question of technology needs for the fall?
Yes, the Technology Committee is part of the task force, and that discussion of having increasing technology usage for all of our users is on the table. I do think that it's imperative to look at the long game on this one, so to Ms. Brown's point, I think it's a good idea. I think the challenge is gonna be, even if it's 700,000 and some change-ish, we should probably look at this proposal at a million. And I say at a million, because you have to think about the infrastructure, think about the training, just kind of getting this thing off the ground. So I do.
Yeah, let it sit after it's cooked.
I do, I do think that depending on, you know, which model that, we have to talk about long-term solutions for our, our users. So I recognize that there were some, there were, I apologize. There were some, some families that had multiple siblings, and there was just one device. But I concur that I think that if that isn't gonna be the case, then we should look at the best bang for our buck, and whether it's lease or buy. We have to also recognize too, that we did disseminate some of our computers to our families right now, and we're still collecting them. So it'd be interesting to get some data on how much, how many computers were returned versus taken out. So that information will be available too. But I do think it's something to consider, given where we're at right now.
All right, thank you, Dr. Mosley, and I apologize for interrupting. I thought I was on mute, and, you know, kids happen. So, Ms. Jilio, and then Mr. Guarino, please.
Hi. Well, first of all, I want to thank Mrs. Johnson, because yes, if that money is not legally money that the Alderman should have access to, then we need to know that, because I think we're required to follow the law. So looking into that sounds like a good idea, although I share your concern, Ms. Raymond, that if they don't get it there, they may take it out of our, our operating budget, which would not be good. I wholeheartedly support Ms. Brown's work that she's done on the one-to-one initiative. I'm involved in another school district in Massachusetts that is halfway through going to one-on-one in their middle and high schools. But I think that the money Mr. Donovan's talking about tonight, that we need to spend or encumber by June 24th, which is very short time from now, probably it would be better spent on other things, so that we have time to make sure that we're doing the best possible we can when we're getting one-to-one Chromebooks for our students. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jilio. Mr. Guarino, and then Ms. Odin.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I like the idea of getting Chromebooks for the kids that don't have them. However, I know that we have a schedule to replace those Chromebooks, and I, I actually like Mr. Donovan's plan to spend the money better, because our out-of-district costs, if you look at what was, what's been happening to them, they, they're, they're still rising and rising. And if we can take that money and put it into the Smart, Smart Start pay downs, and then take the savings from that and put it in the out-of-district, I think that's a good plan that Mr. Donovan has. And then use the other, use the other money that's coming in for accelerating the, the Chromebooks. So I think the plan for the 700, for the 726,000 that Mr. Donovan had, that might be the wrong number, but the plan that Mr. Donovan has for the short amount of money here, I think is, is better. Because of those out-of-district, it, it keeps coming back to haunt us all the time. And, and I like the fact that we want to get more Chromebooks. I think maybe we can accelerate getting Chromebooks on, later on, as Mr. Donovan said. That's all, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Ms. Odin?
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. I agree with Ms. Johnson. If that is adequacy aid for education, I think it ought to go to the school district. I just don't think it's money that the Alderman can, can cipher off us. Certainly, we, we are below the average of state adequacy. We need it here. We have the needs, so I certainly support her in that. I, I agree with Ms. Brown. I think to get a one-on-one Chromebook should be a priority, but I think there are other ways we might be able to do it, and we could use this money. I guess I'd like to go back to Finance and Operations the other night. I don't know how many of you had to watch it, but we had to add an extra 800,000.
It's an Ashley ETV. Is that who you're trying to send it to?
Okay, we had 800,000 over what we had added last year. We added in the budget an extra 800,000, because Mr. Donovan was always trying to get it from another fund.
Or to a specific person. To everyone.
And we were on, right on the border. Well, this year, we were down another 800,000. So I think that really needs to, to have some, some of this money put in there, because that's money that, by law, we have to stay, that, that's not a choice that we can put off another year. So I'd, I'd like to do that. The, the 675,000, if we pay that off, Mr. Donovan, can you tell me how much a year more we would have in our budget if we pay that off?
We'd have 675. That would be the exact one-for-one.
Yeah, for the smart pay down, but how much would we save in budgets going forward if we pay it off now?
We, what, if we paid it off, let's say, in June of this year, then that would be 675,000 less that we paid towards our electricity costs. So we would then have 675,000 less in electricity. Next year, we could use that.
Oh.
Transfer that to the out-of-district.
Oh, that makes a whole lot of, okay. That's helpful. Thank you. So, you know, I do think the ELL, our ELL kids probably had one of the tougher times with remote learning, and I think anything we can do to help them, I would, I wish we had the money for more teachers for ELL. So I definitely would like to see the 50,000 for the ELL books and materials requested by Mr. Chopra. And I agree with Paula, the QuickBooks software and the scanned documents, it, it's things that are needed. We don't see them, you know, day-to-day, but they're needed by the district. So, you know, I'm just, I'm just glad we can have this discussion. Often, we don't have money. Thank you.
Thank you, Dottie. I think this is a good problem to have. Mr. Donovan, I appreciate you pointing out that the 675 is direct savings in the electricity budget for next year, and you'd like to put it towards out-of-district costs when we meet to discuss the budget again in July. And that, that's good, because that was my question about the 500 for the fiscal year 20 funds, like, is 500 enough? So I'm glad to see that you have a plan to put another 600 towards it. The other question I had was regarding the furniture requests. Are we still buying the same chairs that keep breaking, or are we switching to perhaps a sturdier model?
No, we, we switched to a, a better model that should last longer.
Okay, I just, I hate to throw good money after bad, you know?
Yeah, no, exactly. I mean, when, I think when they, when they put the bids together back when they built the schools, part of it's the other ones look nicer, they just weren't as durable.
Okay. All right, so we should keep that in mind for the JS SBC, as we're working on the new middle school and the renovations to the other two. All right. I don't have anybody else in my list in the chat. If anybody else had something to say, if they could just kind of speak up. Okay, I don't hear anybody. So on that note, I would entertain a motion at this time. I think, based on our discussion, that the motion would be to approve the spending of the 820,000 as proposed this evening.
So moved.
Okay. No, that's not the right.
No, because I've, I've put up there 1.486, we only have 820.
Oh.
So we've got to choose, I mean, if we choose the smart.
Oh, math.
Yeah. But one option, which sort of helps with the out-of-district, if we pay down the Smart Start, that's 675, 800. If we put in the ELL books, I'm just picking that based on Ms. Odin, and that's 236, so that gives you 726. And then if you put in the 27,000. And then if you put in the 27,000, that'd give you 753, and then you could spend the rest on furniture. Or possibly, to be honest with you, if you look at the smart start balances, there's a couple that weren't listed, because we didn't have the balance, so we could spend even more on that.
So, okay.
So you could do that. Say QuickBooks, scan the documents, ELL, and then the remainder of it to pay down the smart start.
Okay.
Let me do the math, so I'll know what that is. Minus 27.
You can't, you can't just spring math on us.
No, I know.
It's the last day of school, like, we're officially on vacation now.
It is, and all the parents were struggling, I understand. 743, 726 would then go to smart start. And if Tara slid down, that you can see the smart start balances, there's a couple of schools where we didn't have the detail listed. See, there's Pennachuck and Fairgrounds, and actually Elm, so we could use the extra 50,000 there to pay down those. I'm sure it's combined more than 50,000.
Okay, so the motion that you are proposing is that we move to use our surplus to put the 15,000 for QuickBooks, 12,000 for scanning documents, 50,236 towards ELL materials, and that we use the remainder, 743,726, to pay down smart start balances.
I'll second that.
Okay, I'll call, I make the motion, and then Ms. Oden second it. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Again, I still can't see people, so if we can use the chat function, or just throw something out there. I don't hear.
I have a quick question, Heather, about the out-of-district placements, and I know we're seeing a decrease in child protection calls, which I wonder is going to translate into decreased amount of placements come the fall, just not because there's less abuse or neglect, but because there are less reporting. If we don't necessarily need to tap into that out-of-district tuition costs, can we then reallocate those funds in the fall if, let's say, the hybrid learning extends the school day, and we find that we're spending more money on electricity, because our schools are open longer?
I'll try to enter this, and this is probably better suited for Marsha Bagley. So a couple of things with the out-of-district placement. The first variable is that we can't control the cost of tuition, and each year tuition has gone up. The second thing, too, about out-of-district cost is that some of them have actually opened up, and they're actually accepting students, too. So we're legally obligated to send them. If everything that's happened before, like, what's happened the last three months take place, we're still obligated to offer compensatory services to those kids who have out-of-district costs. So we don't know what cost that is. So if we're not, I'm just making up a number, let's say, we don't send the kids for two months or three months, and we save 3,000, $40,000. That doesn't mean we save it, because we might have to reinvest that $40,000 for compensatory services, we just don't know. And so it's always a very fluid and unpredictable situation when it comes to out-of-district costs. It has been long before I got here.
Oh, and it's, we should just plan for that. I just don't want us to pigeonhole ourselves into that's only where the money can go.
Yeah.
Now, we can, the board can always transfer funds between accounts. That's, you have a right to do that.
Okay.
So that, yeah, that comes up at finance meetings, or we can always call another budget meeting where the whole, because the budget is a committee of the whole, or we all get together like tonight and discuss it. It's my intention to suggest that we have a budget meeting in July, or perhaps early August, once we hear the recommendations from the task forces, you know, in case money needs to be reallocated because of new plans. Like, the budget was planned last winter, and a lot has changed.
Yeah, well said.
Okay, so any other comments or questions on the motion? Okay, I hear none. So, Mr. Guarino, would you like to call the roll?
Sure. On the motion, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Oh, Ms. Zim, I think you were on.
Isn't she funny?
Try again.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes, he's so cute.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you, Mr. Donovan and Dr. Mosley. Mr. Donovan, do you have anything else for us this evening?
No, that's all I need tonight, so enjoy the rest of your meeting.
All right, thank you very much. So the next item on our agenda is non-public due to personnel, so I would be looking for a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91A32A. Anyone? Okay, moved by Ms. Zim?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Gilio. Any discussion on the motion to go into non-public? No? Okay, if we could please call the roll, Mr. Guarino?
Okay, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you, we are in non-public as of 6:08 PM, and if everyone who is not part of our non-public meeting would excuse themselves.